Hey Ally, glad to have you with us tonight. It's cold here in Central Florida. Praise the Lord, we're waiting for our friends to come on. And we will be seeing them shortly, I'm sure. God bless America. We have all kinds of things happening around the world right now. Praise God. It's exciting time to live in. Reading these end time passages and preparing ourselves for what's to come soon is an exciting time. We should never have fear. We should always be prepared though, because we never know exactly the hour of the day. Jesus said, "You wouldn't know the hour of the day, you'd know the season." Anyway, we're waiting just a couple minutes. And I just, I just want to thank the Lord for all that He's done for me. Thanking the Lord for all that He's doing for everyone. I thank the Lord for the opportunity. The opportunity to be able to teach. Praise God. A year or so ago, a year and a half ago, I was so busy, I probably couldn't have done this. Hey Laura, glad to have you on with us tonight. Hey Pat, we're glad you're on. And his other joint. I'm excited about this. When we started this, we're in session 23. I didn't realize how relevant it would be. But we're living these things out. These things soon are going to take place. So it's really the best time to be studying Revelation when we're going to be going through some of it. So let me open with a word of prayer. Father, we praise you tonight and we thank you that we can come before you, throne of grace, in the name of Jesus. I come boldly. And I ask for fresh oil. Fresh oil, Lord, fresh oil. Fresh oil, fresh and ointy. That all that we share tonight and all that we have to say lift up the name of Jesus. Because your word says, "If we lift you up, you'll draw all men unto you." And that's what we want to do, is draw them unto you, not unto me or anybody else. Amen? We will be studying chapter 15 and 16 tonight. They kind of go together, so if you have your Bibles open, let's go there. Excuse me. My nose runs when it's hot, my nose runs when it's cold. Praise God. Hallelujah. Chapter 15, verses 1 through 3 to start. "And I saw another sign in heaven. Great and marvelous, seven angels having the seven last plagues. For in them was filled up the wrath of God. And I saw as it were a sea of glass mingled with fire. And them that had gotten the victory over the beast, and over his image, and over his mark, and over the number of his names, stand on the sea of glass, having the harps of God. And they sang the song of Moses, the servant of God, and the song of the Lamb, saying, 'Great and marvelous are thy works, Lord God Almighty; just and true are thy ways, thou King of saints.'" God supernaturally warns those dwelling on the earth by sending three angels proclaiming in loud voice. This comes out of Revelation 14, 6 through 11. They proclaim the gospel. They proclaim the destruction of Babylon and the judgment on those who worshiped the beast. Those who survive the first half of the tribulation are forced to choose between Satan's kingdom and the ruler called the beast in Revelation 13, or God's kingdom. Those who choose God's kingdom must be willing to die by rejecting the kingdom of Satan. Look at Revelation 13 and 10. It says, "He that leadeth..." Revelation 13 and 10. "He that leadeth into captivity shall go into captivity; he that killeth with a sword must be killed with a sword. Here is the patience and the faith of the saints." So it's coming. Good evening, Michael, glad to have you with us on tonight too. Those who choose Satan's kingdom choose to receive the mark of the beast and worship the image of the beast, ensuring their doom in the lake of fire. Revelation 14, 9 through 10. Now, chapter 15 reveals two events. First, the results of the choices made by the earth's inhabitants between Satan and Christ. And second, the introduction of the bowl, or vile judgments, on those who live on earth. The bowl judgments, or vile judgments, as it reads in the King James, takes place in the second half of Daniel's 70th week. And conclude with the return of the Messiah. Ahahah, hallelujah. Who was rejected by Israel at his first coming. The hills of Megiddo, or Armageddon, in Israel are the armies of earth called for their final battle. There, surviving Israel calls out to the rejected Messiah. And in your notes, you'll find where it says that in Revelation 16 and 16. We'll read that in a little bit. Zechariah 12, Matthew 23, and Zechariah 14. These are all things that we've been done before, so we won't go back and read them again tonight. And there'll be a chart on Daniel's 70th week in your notes also. Revelation 15, 1 to 2. "I saw another sign in heaven." The word in Greek is indication. The word sign means indication ceremonially or supernaturally. It's a sign, a token, a wonder. Following the events of chapter 14, where John witnessed the son of man sitting on a cloud with a sharp sickle and angels emerging from the temple in heaven, one with a sharp sickle and the other with fire. This is the third sign that John sees in heaven. The first was the woman who gave birth to the man-child caught up in heaven. Of course, that was Jesus, Revelation 12 and 1. And woman representing Israel giving birth to Messiah. The second sign was a great red seven-headed dragon with ten horns who pursued the woman. Out of Revelation 12 and 3. The dragon is Satan, who through various kingdoms has pursued the woman, Israel, trying to prevent the birth of Messiah, the man-child that was caught up in heaven. The third sign is the final victory over the beast. As the seven angels are prepared to pour out God's wrath on the beast and his kingdom. Those killed by the beast are seen as victors in heaven, standing before the throne of God. Great and marvelous, John is incredulous at this sight. Describing are prepared to pour out God's wrath on the beast and his kingdom. Those killed by the beast are seen as victors in heaven, standing before the throne of God. Good evening, April, we're glad you're on with us tonight. We're in Revelation, chapter 15. And we're in verses 1 and 2. Great and marvelous, well, John is incredulous at this sight, describing it with emphatic terms. Great, which is mega, and marvelous, which is the mostest. The sight in John's view was all inspiring. This is in contrast to everything John has seen up to this point. Seven angels, having seven last plagues. This is the third set of seven angels. We saw seven angels of the churches, seven angels with trumpets, seven angels with bowls, or vials. The wrath of God is complete. The seven angels were the last plagues, is part of the seventh trumpet, following the seventh bowl, or vile judgment. Christ will return with the armies of heaven in Revelation 19, and we'll be getting closer to it. In Revelation 10, 5 through 7, it says, "And the angel, which I saw, stand upon the sea and upon the earth, lifted up his hand to heaven, and swear by him that liveth forever and ever, who created heaven and the things that therein are, and the earth and the things that therein are, and the sea and the things which are therein, that there should be time no longer. But in the days of the voice of the seventh angel, when he should begin to sound, the mystery of God should be finished, as he hath declared to his servants the prophets." Revelation, chapter 11 and 15 says, "And the seventh angel sounded, and there were great voices in heaven, saying, 'The kingdoms of this world have become the kingdoms of our Lord and of his Christ, and he shall reign forever and ever.'" At this point, most saints are dead, captured, or in hiding. And the seven angels will pour out God's wrath on the perpetrators of this persecution. "And I saw as it were a sea of glass mingled with fire." This is the same crystal sea that was seen in the fourth chapter. The sea of glass is before the throne of God. That's out of verse 2 of chapter 15. "This sea had its scriptural foreshadowing in both the tabernacle and the temple. The bronze, or brass labor, represents the molten sea, was for the washing of the priests, who were to approach the altar." In Exodus 30, and in First Kings, it speaks about it. But in Revelation 4 and 6, it says, "And before the throne there was a glass sea, a glass, there was a sea of glass, like unto crystal. And in the midst of the throne, and round about the throne, are four beasts, or living creatures, full of eyes." Before and behind, that means they had eyes in the back of their head. Wouldn't that be a handy thing to have? Ahahah, I like that. The difference is that the sea of glass, now mingled with fire, pictures the wrath and anger of God. Fire represents both judgment and purification. The bronze sea's purpose was to cleanse the priests before they went before the altar. Here, the fire represents the wrath of God poured on the earth. In the temple, in the tabernacle, they had the brazen, big pot in there, and they had to wash in there. It was a cleansing. But what John is saying here, this is going to be a cleansing with fire. The difference is that the sea of glass, now mingled with fire, pictures the wrath and anger of God. Fire represents both judgment and purification. The bronze sea's purpose was to cleanse the priests before they went before the altar. But here, the fire represents the wrath of God. Now, those who had the victory over the beast. Victory is defined here as choosing death in Christ, rather than life and the beast. Those who were able to choose eternal life over temporal life are victorious. The beast, the number of his names, 666, which we went into last week, and the image are events taking place in the second half of the tribulation. The saints are martyrs of the first half of the tribulation, are pictured under the altar in the fifth seal. We read about that in Revelation 6, 9 through 12. Second harvest of saints takes place during the second half called the Great Tribulation. Here, the ministry of the 144,000, the two witnesses and the three angels, reap a harvest of souls without number gathered from all the earth. Good evening, Ann. We are in Revelation, chapter 15. And in Revelation 7, 9 through 10, and 15 through 17, it says, "After these things I looked, and behold, a great multitude, which no one could number, of all nations, tribes, peoples, and tongues, standing before the throne, and before the Lamb, clothed with white robes, with palm branches in their hands, and crying out with a loud voice, saying, 'Salvation belongs to our God, who sits on the throne, and to the Lamb.' So he said to me, 'These are the ones who come out of the great tribulation, and wash their robes, and make them white in the blood of the Lamb. Therefore they are before the throne of God, and serve him day and night in his temple. And he who sits on the throne will dwell among them. They shall neither hunger anymore nor thirst anymore. The sun shall not strike them, nor any heat, for the Lamb, who is in the midst of the throne, will shepherd them and lead them to living fountains of waters. And God will wipe away every tear from their eye.'" That's going to be a great day, isn't it? And we're giving a little preview here. Revelation 13, 9 and 10. If anyone has an ear, let him hear. "He who leaves into captivity shall go into captivity; he who kills with a sword must be killed with a sword, and here is the patience and faith of the saints." And Matthew 24:14 tells us, "This gospel of the kingdom will be preached in all the world, as a witness to all the nations; then the end will come." The system set up by Satan is separating the wheat from the tares. Satan comes in, sets up his system. You either go with him, or you lose your life for Jesus. That's how it's separated. Standing on the sea of glass. The saints of the Great Tribulation are standing on the sea of glass before the throne of God. These martyrs died for their faith, rather than worship Satan and the person of the beast or the Antichrist. Those who choose Satan and submitted to the beast and his kingdom are able to live for a short time, only to face God's wrath. Revelation 15, 3 and 4. "And they sang the song of Moses, the servant of God, and the song of the Lamb, saying, 'Great and marvelous are thy works, Lord God Almighty; just and true are thy ways, thou King of the saints; who shall not fear thee, O Lord, and glorify thy name; for thou alone are holy; for all nations shall come and worship thee, for thy judgments are made manifest.'" Great words. Excuse me. They sing the song. The song of Moses is a song of God saving Israel from the armies of Egypt after crossing the Red Sea. Let's turn to Exodus and read that song. Some of you may recognize the song, because it was written and it was given as a song years ago. I remember singing it. Exodus, chapter 15. Exodus 15. 1 through 18. "Then sang," this is after they came across the Red Sea. "Then sang Moses and the children of Israel this song unto the Lord, and spake, saying, 'I will sing unto the Lord, for he hath triumphed gloriously; the horse and the rider hath he thrown into the sea.'" The Lord is my strength and song. He's become my salvation. He is my God, and I will prepare him in habitation, my Father's God, and I will exalt him. The Lord is a man of war, the Lord is his name. "Pharaohs, chariots, and his hosts hath he cast into the sea." You know, that had to be a tremendous moment. No wonder they sang. When you get victory. You remember ever being in a football game and you scored a touchdown? They had the victory songs. That's what Moses was doing, they're singing a victory song. Back to Revelation 15. In Revelation 15 and 2, the martyrs who were pursued by Antichrist, who Pharaoh foreshadows, have escaped beyond his reach to the other side. They, like Moses and Israel, celebrate the song of victory of the armies of the beast. "Now, like the walls of the Red Sea came pouring down, and Pharaohs pursuing them all. God's about to pour his judgment on Antichrist and his kingdom." Do you see the same parallel there? The song of the Lamb is in Revelation 5, 9 and 10. Let's go back there and read that. Revelation 5, 9 and 10. Where it says, "And they sung a new song, saying, 'Thou art worthy to take the book; and open the seals thereof; for thou wast slain and last redeemed us to God by the blood out of every kindred, and tongue, and people, and nation, and hast made us unto our bad kings and priests, and we shall reign upon the earth.'" They sang that. They sang those things. It celebrated the salvation of the saints before the throne of God in the Lamb. Believe me, if you don't enjoy praise now, you're going to have a real problem in heaven. Because I'm telling you, they're singing up there, they're shouting up there, there's victorious songs up there. And if you don't like to raise your hand, you better get used to raising it in heaven. Because they're going to raise them up there, there's going to be such celebration. These believers celebrate their salvation in heaven with the Lamb. In the same way that Israel celebrates their salvation from the armies of Pharaoh, the believers celebrate it in heaven. In this scene, the saints of the Great Tribulation are executed for their refusal to worship the beast. But in death, they pass through the sea of tribulation and are taken before the throne of God. Revelation 15, verses 5 through 8. "And after that I looked, and behold, the temple of the tabernacle of the testimony in heaven was opened; and the seven angels came out of the temple, having the seven plagues, clothed them pure in white linen, and having their breasts girded with golden girdles. And one of the four beasts gave unto the seven angels seven golden vials, full of the wrath of God, who liveth forever and ever. And the temple was filled with smoke from the glory of God and from his power; and no man was able to enter into the temple till the seven plagues of the seven angels were fulfilled." Well, after these things, that means they fist-follow the celebration of the saints of the Great Tribulation, who were on the crystal sea mingled with fire. These saints were killed for their refusal to worship the beast. Now, the wrath of God will be poured on those who killed the saints. This point is the fourth quarter of the seven-year tribulation period. The temple of the tabernacle, well, the temple in heaven, which has the tabernacle of the testimony, the ark of the covenant. The ark of the covenant was placed on Mount Moriah during the first temple. Out of the temple came the seven angels. The seven angels are part of the great and marvelous sight that was seen by John at the start of this chapter. One of the four living creatures, well, one of the chair-ben before the throne of God, handed the bowls to the seven angels. The seven golden bowls, full of the wrath of God. That's the Greek word, philet, philet loup, a broad, shallow bowl, or a deep saucer. The temple was filled with smoke. This smoke represents the fire of the wrath of God's holiness. The glory of the Lord filled the earthly temple when Solomon completed its construction. And the temple was dedicated to the service of God. In First Kings 8, is where this is mentioned. Verses 9 through 13, said, "Nothing was in the ark, except the two tablets of stone, which Moses put there at Orah, when the Lord made a covenant on the children of Israel, when they came unto the land of Asia. And it came to pass, when the priests came out of the holy place, that the cloud filled the house of the Lord, so that the priests could not continue ministering because of the cloud. For the glory of the Lord filled the house of the Lord. Then Solomon spoke. The Lord said he would dwell in the dark cloud. And he said, 'I have surely built you an exalted house, and a place for you to dwell in forever.'" They couldn't stand because of the glory of the Lord. And that's what is happening in heaven, they couldn't stand. The glory of God is the presence of God. The glory of God is the presence of God. In Ezekiel, there's another instance here where they're speaking of the glory. Ezekiel, chapter 1. He's speaking in verse 26, it starts with, "And above the firmament, over their heads, was the likeness of a throne, in appearance like a sapphire stone. And the likeness of the throne was a likeness with the appearance of a man, high above it. Also, from the appearance of his waist and upward, I saw as it were the color of amber, with the appearance of fire all around it. And from the appearance of his waist and downward, I saw as it were the appearance of fire with brightness all around. Like the appearance of a rainbow in a cloud on a rainy day, so was the appearance of the brightness all around it. This was the appearance of the likeness of the glory of the Lord. So when I saw it," Ezekiel speaking, "it fell on my face, and I heard a voice of one speaking." When you're in the presence of God, you can't stand up. You just, when that glory comes in, you can't. It's very dangerous, I'm going to interject this, to pray for the glory to come into a church if there's sin in the camp. Because where there's glory is, and there's sin, they will die. You can't be in the present with sin in your life. Only the blood of Jesus washes us and keeps us where we can be in that place. Back to Revelation 15. "No one was able to enter the temple. During this time of the seven-year tribulation period, the temple is closed till the wrath of God is complete on earth. At the completion of the seventh bowl, Christ returns with the saints." All right, chapter 16. Revelation 16, 1 through 9. "And I heard a great voice out of the temple, saying to the seven angels, 'Go your ways, and pour out the vials, bowls, of the wrath of God upon the earth.' And the first went, and poured out his vial upon the earth; and they fell ennoisome and grievous sore upon the men which had the mark of the beast, and upon them which worshipped his image. And the second angel poured out his vial upon the sea; and it became as the blood of a dead man; and every living soul died in the sea. And the third angel poured out his vial upon the rivers and fountains of waters; and they became blood. And I heard the angel of the waters say, 'Thou art righteous, O Lord, which art and wast, and shall be, because thou hast judged thus; for they have shed the blood of saints and prophets; and thou hast given them blood to drink; for they are worthy of that blood to drink.' And I heard another out of the altar, saying, 'Even so, Lord God Almighty, true and righteous are thy judgments.' And the fourth angel poured out his vial upon the sun; and power was given unto him to scorch men with fire; and men were scorched with great heat, and blasphemed in the name of God, which had power over these plagues; and they repented not, forgiving glory." Revelation 16 reveals God's judgments on the earth in the second half of the tribulation. This period is known as the Great Tribulation. With these judgments, the wrath of God's complete. At the close of the seven bowl judgment, Christ returns with the armies of heaven to establish the millennial kingdom. And I know we're all looking forward to that. Chapter 16 is really introduced in 15. There, we first see the seven angels emerge from the temple in heaven with the seven plagues. Their appearance in 15 follows John's vision of those who had victory over the kingdom of the beast by their martyrdom. He sees those who have died because they refused to receive the mark or worship Antichrist. And they sing the song of Moses, which we read earlier, in heaven before the throne. And they are victorious. Chapter 16 takes place after the world has been given a choice. Those on the earth have the choice to receive the mark, worship the beast and live, or refuse and die. God supernaturally aids humanity by sending three angels to warn them about the choice that they are being forced to make. Send the angels. Many on earth choose Christ and death, rather than worship the beast and his image. They are seen in heaven before the throne on the crystal sea. In the second verse of 15, others choose the easier route. It's never the easy route with God, I want to tell you that. They choose the easier route, worship Antichrist, and receive the mark. This chapter takes place after a period of decision on the earth. Most on earth have made their decision. Those who chose Christ died, some are in hiding, only to emerge after Christ's return. During this period, Israel is supernaturally protected in the wilderness of Judea. Those who followed the warning of Christ in Matthew fled into the wilderness following the abomination of desolation, when the Mount of Olives is split open for their escape. We read that in Matthew 24 and in Revelation 12. Here in the wilderness, Israel comes to the knowledge of Christ, realizing the same Jesus who was crucified is in fact Israel's Savior in only hope. As the armies of the earth gathered toward the hills of Megiddo, or Armageddon, Israel calls out to Jesus, says, "There's Messiah who returns with the armies of heaven." At this point, those alive on the earth are mostly followers of Satan, working through the Antichrist and the false prophet. The great multitude in Revelation, chapter 7, gather before the throne. From all nations are those killed for their faith. After those left on the earth have made their choice, God begins the judgments of wrath by commanding the angels to pour out the vials or the bowls on the earth. The seven vile judgments complete God's wrath on the earth. Following the seventh bowl, Jesus returns with angels and saints and establishes his kingdom, known as the millennium. Those killed for their faith receive their resurrected bodies and rule with Christ and his kingdom, along with the returning saints. Can I get a hallelujah? Woo! The bowl judgments stand in contrast to the seven trumpet and seal judgments. The bowl judgments are not meant to move humanity into decision, but are a demonstration of God's wrath. For example, the second trumpet judgment affected one-third of the sea. The second bowl judgment affects the whole sea, causing all sea life to die. The abomination of desolation also separates the trumpet and bowl judgments. The first bowl judgment is against those who worship the beast and his image by receiving the mark. Placing the timing of this judgment in the second half of Daniel's 70th week, following the abomination of desolation. And you will see that in your chart. Revelation 16 and 9. "And I heard a great voice out of the temple, saying to the seven angels, 'Go your ways, and pour out the vials of the wrath upon the earth, wrath of God upon the earth.' And I heard..." Voice is probably God, since it comes from the earth, excuse me, it comes from the temple. And no one at this point is allowed into the temple of God until his wrath is complete. We read that in Revelation 15 and 8. Verse 2 of chapter 16. "And the first went, and poured out his vial upon the earth; and they fell ennoisome and grievous sore upon the men which had them." and they fell ennoysome and grievous sore upon the men which had the mark of the beast, and upon them which worshiped the image." This word, "noisome and grievous," it's like a wound that produces a discharge or pus. Yuck. The first taste of God's wrath falls on those who choose to reject the angelic warning in chapter 14. The taste of wrath was not to produce repentance, but to produce suffering. Revelation teaches there's no hope of repentance of those who turns to and worship the beast, his image, and receives the mark. The loathsome sore is an oozing wound, tormenting the individuals who choose to worship the beast. This sore could very well be the result from untested technologies imposed on those who were submitted to the beast. We don't know. But it could be a plausible explanation of those living at the time. But in actuality, it's God's wrath against those who persecuted his people. Remember Satan's works of people. And that's what happened. Revelation 16 and 3. "And the second angel poured out his vial upon the sea; and it became as the blood of a dead man; and every living soul died in the sea." That's everything in the sea died. Upon the sea. This word is derived from salt or the salt sea, can mean the Mediterranean sea or the oceans. Here the meaning is probably oceans. God's wrath is poured out on all humanity. In contrast to the second trumpet judgment, where one-third of the sea became blood and one-third of the creatures died, here, all of the sea becomes blood. And all the creatures died, I can't even imagine, smell. Can you even imagine? You ever smelled dead fish? Yeah. It became blood. Both seawater and blood have the same content of salts. The sea becoming blood reflects the condition of mankind like a dead man. This is a judgment of wrath, not one to turn men towards repentance, but to punish those who are at war with God. God, the source of life, the source of blessing, both on the just and the unjust, withdraws life from the sea. This could be a chemical reaction which starts in the asteroid, which turned a third of the sea into blood. But here, the reaction spreads to the rest of the ocean, killing all and all oceanic life. It deprives the earth of a major source of food and nourishment. God withdraws life in the ocean. Now I'm gonna have some comparisons here, between the plagues in Egypt and the seven trumpets and the seven bowl judgments. As far as the plagues in Egypt, the false prophets there, those false ones that came up against Moses, they turned water into blood in Exodus 7. But in the seven trumpets in Revelation 8 and 9, there was hail, fire mingled with blood, and a third of the trees are burned, all green grass is buried. And then the bowl judgments, there's a sore on those who received the mark. Then in Exodus, with the plagues, there were frogs. And but in Revelation 8 and 9, there were burning mountains thrown down into the sea that became blood. Creatures died and a third of the ships were destroyed. But in Revelation 16, the sea became blood and every living creature died. In Exodus 8, there was lice. And in Revelation, the trumpets, there was a burning star. Then in the bowl judgments, there's rivers and springs become blood. In Exodus, there was the flies, that was a plague. In Revelation with the trumpets, a third of the sky was without light. The sun, moon, stars were darkened. But in Revelation 16, it tells us in verse 8, that the sun burns mankind. Has to really be hot. All right, in Exodus, the livestock died. And in the trumpet judgment, their demon locusts from the abyss come forth. But in the bowl judgments, the kingdom of the beast filled with darkness, the land is filled with darkness. Then there's boils, there's heavy hail, there's locusts and darkness and death in Egypt. But then we see there's locusts, earthquakes, there's horsemen come, there's demon horsemen. And then we see in Revelation 16, we will read that shortly, that the river Euphrates dries up. And that's where we're heading next. Revelation 16, 4 through 7. "And the third angel poured out his vial upon the rivers and fountains of waters; and they became blood. And I heard the angel of the waters say, 'Thou art righteous, O Lord, which art and wast and shall be, because thou hast judged us; for they have shed the blood of saints and prophets; and thou hast given them blood to drink.'" Now we read that, but I'm reading it again. Rivers and springs, like the first plague on Egypt, and the third trumpet judgment, the source of fresh water from much of the earth became blood. Whether this is blood like in color and texture or actual blood is unknown until that day. The point God is making of man is not mercy, but judgment. God is repaying the inhabitants of the earth for their treatment of his people who are now in heaven. Angel of the waters. In the same way God has assigned his saints to specific geographic areas, angels are in charge of parts of the physical realms. An angel is in charge of the water to guard and protect it from demonic activity or interference. The angel gives his approval to the judgments on fresh water, which is a necessity for life. They shed the blood of saints and prophets. The persecution and murder of the saints is the purpose of the wrath poured out on man. The trumpet judgments were designed to turn man toward God, to allow humanity to see their dependence on God. But the vial judgments are designed to show the righteousness, righteousness of God's judgment. Even here, the judgments are only a foretaste of God's eternal wrath and judgment. Those who are on the earth at this point are mostly those who worship the beast and receive the mark. The believers, except for those in hiding, in Israel, hidden in Judea or wilderness are in heaven. Says, "You've given them blood to drink. For the death of many of the saints, God judges the world and causes them to suffer." One of the purposes that come out of these judgments is to demonstrate the hardness of the heart of man. That despite all these judgments, man becomes angry and infuriated at God. Revelation 16 and 8. "And the fourth angel poured out his vial upon the sun. The sun, the source of light and warmth, is magnified, giving man a taste of the coming heat in the lake of fire, which those who have chosen Satan will receive." Even in this day and time, you can't be out in the sun all day when it's at its brightest here in Florida, you get burned. And when you've got a really bad burn, it's bad. But this will be worse than that. This'll burn them up. The heat from the sun brings out the true nature of those who worship the beast and his image. There's no remorse or contrition in the face of the heat from the sun. Mankind's reaction will be the same in eternal hell with this judgment and the one to come, because his heart will not soften towards God. For this reason, we are told twice in this chapter that men did not repent. Without the supply of the ocean waters and drinking waters, the situation for the earth's inhabitants begins to look very bleak. Now adding to their dilemma is the scorching heat from the sun. Out of this judgment, God demonstrates the character of those facing judgment. They blasphemed the name of God. Rather than seeking mercy, the earth's inhabitants rebel further, verbally assaulting God in heaven. God demonstrates the hardness of man's heart in his own righteousness through these judgments. His wrath is falling on those who persecuted his people. See, vengeance is mine, say the Lord. God's gonna take care of those that he loves. May not be during the time you're alive, but he is going to have the final say. They did not repent. To think differently afterwards is worth repeat. To reconsider, to morally feel a compunction. The heart of remaining humanity has no desire to repent. They see God as their enemy. They must take their eternity on Satan. The Antichrist and false prophet, their only hope is for Satan to be victorious. In Revelation 16, 10 through 21, we'll read the rest of the chapter. "And the fifth angel poured out his vial upon the seat of the beast; and his kingdom was full of darkness; and they gnawed their tongues for pain, and blasphemed the God of heaven because of their pains and their sores, and repented not of their deeds. And the sixth angel poured out his vial upon the great river Euphrates; and the water there obviously dried up, that the way of the kings of the east might be prepared. And I saw three unclean spirits, like frogs, come out of the mouth of the dragon, and out of the mouth of the beast, and out of the mouth of the false prophet. For they are the spirits of devils working miracles, which go forth unto the kings of the earth and of the whole world, and gather them to the battle of that great day of God Almighty." Verse 15. "Behold, I come as a thief; blessed is he that watches and keepeth his garments, lest he walk naked, and they see his shame. And he gathered them together into a place called in the Hebrew tongue Armageddon. And the seventh angel poured out his vial into the air; and there came a great voice out of the temple of heaven from the throne saying, 'It's done.' And there were voices, and thunders, and lightnings, and a great earthquake, such as was not since Manu upon the earth, so mighty an earthquake and so great. And the great city was divided into three parts; and the cities of the nations fell; and great Babylon came in remembrance before God, to give unto her the cup of the wine of the fierceness of his wrath. And every island fled away, and the mountains were not found. There fell upon men a great hail out of heaven, every stone about the weight of a talent; and men blasphemed God because of the plague of the hail, for the plague thereof was exceeding great." Must be horrible times. Verses 10 and 11. Throne of the Beast. The erebiet city of Babylon, the capital of Antichrist's kingdom, was filled with darkness. Egypt faced a similar plague in the days of Moses. The fourth trumpet also brought darkness to one third of the earth. The purpose of the darkness over the kingdom of the beast could be for several reasons. First, the darkness is a foretaste of the eternal darkness the dwellers of the earth will chase for all eternity in hell. In Matthew, chapter 8, 11 and 12, it says, "And I say unto you, that many shall come from the east and west, and shall sit down with Abraham, and Isaac, and Jacob in the kingdom of heaven; but the children of the kingdom shall be cast out into outer darkness; there shall be weeping and gnashing of teeth." Secondly, the darkness could allow any and hiding in the kingdom of Antichrist to escape the coming destruction of new Babylon under the cover of darkness. In Jeremiah 51, verses 6 and 7, it says, "Flee from the midst of Babylon; and everyone save his life; do not be cut off in their iniquity; for this is the time of the Lord's vengeance; he shall recompense them." Babylon was a golden cup in the Lord's hand that made all the earth drunk. The nations drank her wine, therefore the nations are deranged. So God is saying through Jeremiah, escape from them. The third point might be, the people of this kingdom will not repent or seek forgiveness while they're still alive on the earth. And this judgment demonstrates the darkness, the darkness and hardness in man's heart. They gnaw their tongues. Well, the darkness along with oozing sores from the first bowl, lack of water, lack of food, and scorching heat are taking their toll. The response of man is one of war, not repentance. In agony, humanity gnaws at their tongues, but they refuse to reprint and cry out for mercy. Speaking of water, excuse me. They blasphemed the God of heaven. And those on earth respond and blaspheming God? It's been an ongoing process, hasn't it? The righteousness of God's wrath demonstrated by its recipients, for the second time humanity shake their fists towards heaven, blasphemed God's name. But they did not repent. This is the second time this point is made. It's repeated twice for emphasis, so the reader understands that even if humanity could repent, they would not. Verses 12 through 16. On the great river Euphrates. Drying up a river might not seem like a plague, but what follows is the point. The gathering of the earth for the final battle in the land of Israel is the issue. This is the second time New Euphrates plays a role in the book of Revelation. In Revelation 9, we see four powerful angels bound at the river, who are released and head an army of 200 million demon horsemen in the close of the first half of the tribulation. This results in the death of the third of mankind. Here we see the Euphrates River as a barrier to the kings of the east. Kings from the east might be prepared. Why does a way for the kings of the east need to be prepared? Well, there's been a debate among many concerning that verse. Are the kings from the east coming to help the kingdom of the beast? Or for war with the kingdom of the beast? In Daniel 11, before the middle of the tribulation, the Antichrist wars with the east and the north, defeating them and consolidating his world power. I'll read you out of Daniel 11. "But he," verses 43 and 45, "but he shall have power over the treasures of gold and of silver, and over all the precious things of Egypt; and the Libyans and the Ethiopians shall be at his steps. The tidings unto the east and unto the north shall trouble him. Therefore he shall go forth with great fury, to destroy and utterly to make away many; and he shall plant the tabernacles of his palace between the seas and the glorious holy mountain; yet he shall come to his end, and none shall help him." For the calamities in the world at this time, including lack of food, water, and darkness surrounding the throne of the beast, which is new Babylon, what is the reason the east advances towards Israel? Well, there's two schools of thought. First, the kings from the east are coming in opposition to the beast after his kingdom is made vulnerable by all the judgments. With his kingdom in darkness, an invasion might seem right to repay the beast for the destruction he raised on them. The second could be, the kings from the east are coming in alliance for a final satanic assault against the creator. The frogs like demons led support to the second view, since they go out to deceive the kings of the earth and to gather them. Said, "I saw three unclean spirits, like frogs, coming out of the mouth." If there's any opposition in a satanic kingdom, these demonic forces resembling frogs, from John's view of the spiritual, they're designed to crush it. The unclean spirits proceed from the unholy trinity, the mouth of the dragon, the mouth of the beast, and the mouth of the false prophet. They're spirits of devils working miracles. The method used to return any rebellion into an alliance is through signs and wonders performed to convince the kings to join the battle with the beast. Satan seems to give the armies of the earth hope they can defeat the armies of God. Satan is again repeating an old tactic that he used before when a third of the angels rebelled against God, thinking they could defeat him. Here, man thinks he can defeat God in a Satan-inspired deception. Then it goes on, it says, "Behold, they come as a thief; blessed is he who watches." Why is a warning and blessing placed here? Jesus' warning is located several places in Scripture. Matthew 24, Luke 12, 2 Peter. The warning is to those who are not watching. To them, Jesus comes like a thief in the night. To those not watching, their nakedness and shame will be exposed. This warning applies to the pre-tribulation and tribulation saints. But the blessing of being clothed is offered to those watching. Those who wait and look for the master's return will be blessed. Turn to 1 Thessalonians, chapter 5. 1 Thessalonians, chapter 5. And we will read verses 2 through 5. 1 Thessalonians, chapter 5. "For you yourselves know perfectly that the day of the Lord so comes as a thief in the night; for when they say peace and safety, and sudden destruction comes upon, and as labor pains upon a pregnant woman; and they shall not escape; but you, brethren, are not in darkness, so that this day should overtake you as a thief. You are all sons of light, and sons of the day; we are not of the night, nor of darkness." Temptation in the tribulation will sin. Imagine feeling like you are the only survivor of your family. You, along with other survivors, may be tempted to engage in some simple activities such as adultery, premarital sex. There'll be a temptation in the tribulation period for believers, just as it is today. Jesus does not want the tribulation saints. Those who find Christ in the midst of the trial, they get lax and make excuses to sin. Then it says, "They gather them together." The "they" is the demonic force sent from the unholy trinity to the kings of the earth. The armies of man are being gathered to a location, fight against God. The armies of man are being gathered to a location, fight against God. Armageddon. The Greek is a transliteration of the Hebrew word Megiddo, which literally means mountain of Megiddo. Later, Megiddo became a chariot fortress city for Solomon. It was first mentioned in the book of Joshua as one of the cities that Joshua conquered. Also, the righteous king Josiah was killed by Pharaoh there, who had come to aid the Assyrians against Babylon. The armies of the world will be gathered together in a place called Armageddon. What will be the reason for their gathering? How this fits into God's end-time plan is subject of speculation. But the armies of the Antichrist defeated Israel at the middle of the tribulation, he then installed the abomination of desolation in the third temple. The portion of Israel flees into the wilderness to escape. According to Zechariah, one third of Israel survives the tribulation and enters the millennium. In Zechariah thirteen, it says, And it shall come to pass in all the land, says the Lord, that two-thirds in it shall be cut off and die, and one-third should be left in it. I will bring them one-third through the fire, where I refine them as silver is refined, and test them as gold as tester. They will call in my name, and I will answer them. I will say, This is my people. And each one will say, The Lord is my God. In Zechariah, we see an end-time picture of Israel being supernaturally empowered by the Lord to fight against the armies of the earth immediately before the return of Christ. In Zechariah twelve, it says, The Lord will save the tents of Judah first, so that the glory of the house of David and the glory of the inhabitants of Jerusalem shall not become greater than that of Judah. In that day, the Lord will defend the inhabitants of Jerusalem. The one who is feeble among them in that day shall be like David, and the house of David shall be like God, like the angel of the Lord before them. It shall be in that day that he will seek to destroy all the nations that come against Jerusalem. The surviving armies and people of the earth are gathered to Israel, specifically to Megiddo, to meet the king of kings. The moving of humanity is at the behest of demonic forces, rallying men on earth like cattle to a confrontation with Jesus. The seventh angel. Revelation sixteen, verses seventeen through twenty-one. He poured out his vial into the air. When the wrath proceeding from the seventh bowl is completed, Christ returns with the armies of saints and angels. A loud voice is most likely God's voice in the temple, since when the cloud filled the temple, none was permitted in the temple till the bowls of wrath were complete. There was a great earthquake. The events of this final bowl of wrath proceeds as the armies of the earth are arriving or headed towards Jerusalem. An earthquake unequalled in the history of mankind destroys all the cities of the earth, including rebuilt Babylon. When the seventh angel pours out his vial, in the atmosphere, the greatest earthquake that ever was or that ever will take place on earth will occur. All the cities of the world will fall. All high mountain ranges will dissolve, and all islands will be moved or disappear. Jerusalem will be divided into three parts at that time. The mountain of the Lord will raise at the highest point in the area or possibly the world. This total changing on the earth's crust will allow fulfillment of the prophecies that speak about the desert land being watered and being lush during the millennial rain. Most deserts are caused by high mountain ranges. When the mountain ranges are dissolved, most of the world will become fertile. This change of the crust will eliminate fault lines. There'll be no more major earthquakes during the millennium. Hallelujah. There will also be more gentle wind patterns without the mountain ranges, meaning less severe storms. The earth will become as a paradise. Isaiah two and two. It shall come to pass in the last days that the mountain of the Lord's house shall be established in the top of the mountains, and shall be exalted above the hills, and all nations shall flow in it. Revelation eighteen and twenty-one, it says, Then a mighty angel took up a stone, like a great millstone, and threw it into the sea, saying, Thus with violence the great city Babylon shall be thrown down, and should not be found any more. Great Babylon came in remembrance before God. New Babylon, the economic center of the world, is divided into three parts. This happens immediately before its complete destruction, covered in chapter eighteen. Great hail fell from heaven. As the armies of the earth are gathered, the people run from the earthquakes and hailstorms that fall in mankind. The weight of the hailstorms is about a talent. A talent was three thousand shekels. These hailstorms weigh about a hundred to a hundred and forty pounds each. Can you imagine? The hailstorms will rain down all over the earth during this final plague before the second coming of Jesus. You get one of them, you're done. All this upheaval on earth during this final plague before the second coming of Jesus comes about by a rock made without hands hitting the earth at Babylon. Daniel speaks of this rock. These passages in Daniel have a due of fulfillment. They speak of the rock Jesus destroying the works of the devil. They also speak of the kingdom of the beast being destroyed by a rock. More will be said about the destruction of the beast in chapter eighteen. Men blasphemed God. Even at this point, with these horrendous judgments on mankind, oozing sores, death in the ocean, fresh waters, scorching heat, unbearable pain, darkness, earthquakes, man decide to curse God rather than repent. Here again, God is demonstrating the righteousness of a judgment against the hardness of man. The book of Joel, chapter three, pictures this end-time gathering of the nations against Israel in the land of Israel. Joel caused this event, the Valley of Decision, because people have made the choice to go to war against their creator. They feel they are assembling for war, but actually they are assembling for judgment. In Joel three, one through three, it says, Behold, in those days and at that time, when I bring back the captors of Judah and Jerusalem, I will also gather all nations and bring them down to the valley of Jehoshaphet, and will enter in judgment with them there on the count of my people, my heritage Israel, whom they have scattered among the nations. They have also divided my land. I tell you what, when you start dividing Israel, you're on the wrong side. Better listen to that. If our country goes there, you know where we're going to be. Verse nine. Proclaim this among the nations. Prepare for war. Wake up the mighty man. Let all the men of war draw near. Let them come up. Beat your plowshares into swords, and you're putting hooks into spears. Let the weak say, I'm strong. Assemble and come, all your nations. Gather together all you are. Cause your mighty ones to go down there, O Lord. Let the nations be wakened, and come up to the valley of Jehoshaphet, for there they will sit to judge all their surrounding nations. Put in the sickle, for the harvest is ripe. Come, go down, for the wine presses full. The vats overflow, for their wickedness is great. Multitudes, multitudes, in the valley of decision. For the day of the Lord is near in the valley of decision. The sun and moon will grow dark, and the stars will diminish in their brightness. The Lord also shall roar from Zion, and utter his voice from Jerusalem. The heavens and earth will shake, but the Lord will be a shelter for his people and the strength of the children of Israel. So you shall know that I am the Lord your God, dwelling in Zion, my holy mountain. Then Jerusalem shall be wholly annihilated, and shall never pass through her again. And will come to pass in that day that the mountains shall drip with new wine, and hills shall flow with milk, and all the brooks of Judah shall be flooded with water. Fountains shall flow from the house of the Lord, and water the valley of Akasis. Egypt shall be a desolation, and Edom, an innocent, Edom, a desolate wilderness, because of violence against the people of Judah, for they have shed innocent blood in their land. But Judah shall abide forever, and Jerusalem from generation to generation, for I acquit them of the guilt of bloodshed whom I have not acquitted, for the Lord dwells in Zion. Verse eighteen, we read about the kingdom of Messiah, which follows this end-time battle. New wine flows in the mountains, and the hills flow with milk. Jerusalem shall be holy and blessed, a clear indication of the messianic age to follow. The battle of the nations assembled in the valley of Jehoshaphet is a reference to the event known as Armageddon, when the nations of the earth assemble against Israel and are defeated by Jesus Christ, Israel's Messiah in his second coming. That's it for tonight. Thanks for joining us. You can go back and watch it again, and catch up on it. And you're saying, God bless you. Good night.